City of Campbell, California, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Mister Clerk, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Fields. Absent Commissioner Scissor, here. Commissioner Ostrowski.
Here.
Commissioner Craig. Commissioner Kamkar.
Here.
Vice Chair Buckbinder.
Present.
Chair Jing.
Here. Thank you. So moving on to approval with minutes. Any comments, suggested changes to the minutes?
Just a note on page five of the minutes. I requested that the Planning Commission recommend adding a program to declare shelter crisis. Note that the Planning Commission doesn't have the authority to declare a shelter crisis. I don't know if that's too nitpicky, but I noticed that.
Okay, and do I hear a proposal for approval with?
I have a couple of comments. It's more about the tenor of the comments by the commissioners on the on the beer, the beer place. And I just want to get checked out, maybe, maybe other commissioners will disagree with me on this, but, you know, on the page three, it states that Bruce Bowen, the adjacent property owner spoke in favor of the design state easement on his property should be removed. And also recommend move the loading zone in front of the project building. I'm not sure he was that enthusiastic about the project, was he enthusiastic about the project? And, and and then the other thing was I feel left out because where is, oh, it's earlier, I'm sorry. We're, we're on the lower down, it says Commissioner Fields, Buckbinder, Craig and Kamkar express support of the project, I feel left out, and I actually expressed support of the project, though I had some concerns like other commissioners about certain aspects of the project. So but I did actually overall express positive attitude about, about the project in general. And I, and I thought that the the, the issue, to me, the issue, I'm not sure if it's expressed strongly enough about traffic and, and customers on the curb. To me, there was a number of commissioners that expressed fairly strong concerns about the trash pickup and, and, and the traffic. And with respect to customers being on the curb, and it seems to me, it says commissioners understand the concerns. That seems a really kind of low-key way of expressing what I heard. So I just, just wanted to indicate that I thought maybe it should be a little bit more forceful. At least from my perspective.
If I can just add a little context, Mister Bowen's comments, what I have in my notes is that he was mainly concerned about the alley between his property and the one being developed being made extremely narrow and people throwing trash in there and so forth like that, I think that was his main concern, I think that's what the easement as property refers to, although that's not entirely clear to me. And yeah, that's just, I want to, that was, I think, the thing that he was if you, and yeah, I agree, we definitely did have some discussion about the speed of traffic going by, I think I remember recommending Bollards.
Yes.
Well, I was just proposing a solution, we could change the word, understands the concerns to commissioners identified concerns. That helps characterize better.
That would help.
I was going to add, my understanding was, he said if I gave five feet for my building, maybe the maybe the applicant should also give five feet.
Yeah, I actually had the other thing saying that I thought that Commissioner Kamkar talked about the possible downsizing of the footprint, right?
That was my, that was my comment, saying I'm for it, it's just, I think you're pushing too many limits. You know, I said, maybe like.
And, and you know, I don't know if it's appropriate at this point to just but since we're talking about that, I just want to real quickly, we don't have to discuss it or anything. Probably isn't appropriate to discuss it, but I revisited the site. And I looked in the alley, because I wasn't really familiar with the alley. And the alley is where, for that whole block, for all the buildings on that entire block down to Central Avenue. That alley is where all the trash is picked up. So the trash truck goes down that alley and services, you know, from, from the pizza place down to the end of the block. There, there are multiple trash receptacles there, so that's where the trash is picked up. And although this property doesn't abut against the alley, you have to go through, through the, you have to go to the, on the the the, the open section there to get to the alley, it would seem to me logically to try to figure out a way to make the trash be picked up in the alley where all the other trash is picked up. So I just wanted to.
I just wouldn't, since it's a unnoticed item back on the agenda, I wouldn't discuss too much the project to this point.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we could. Yeah, there'll be, if they take it to approval stage, then we could discuss at that point.
All right, thank you.
So with that modification to express concerns, are we okay to approve the minutes? If so, like to.
I'll, I'll move to approve the minutes of eleven twenty seconds.
Thank you, a second. Okay.
Commissioner Scissor.
Hi.
Commissioner Ostrowski.
Hello, Steve.
Commissioner Craig. Commissioner Kamkar.
Hi.
Vice Chair Jing, I mean Vice Chair Buckbinder.
Hi.
Chair Jing.
Hi.
Okay, so that's carried. Directories, would any communications or modifications to the agenda tonight? Nope, no whatsoever, if the chair would, or the commissioner would like to reverse the order and have the public hearing first, both the staff planner and the applicant are available to accommodate. Right, thank you, so I'd propose to fellow commissioners, we swap the items, so we put the new business second and we do the public hearing first. Okay, thank you. So I'll move on to all requests, this is the point on the agenda where members of the public may address the commission on items of concern to the community that are not listed on the agenda this evening. People may speak up to five minutes on any matter concerning commission. Do we see anybody online, Mister Clerk? So I'll close that and moving on to the agenda items and the first item tonight is PLN dash twenty twenty-one dash eight four, public hearing to consider the request of David Giannelli for property located at thirteen ninety-four Monroe Avenue to allow construction of approximately four thousand four hundred sixty-seven square foot, single-story family residence. The application under consideration includes a site and architectural review permit for our number PLN dash twenty twenty-one dash eighty-four. Staff is recommending this item be deemed categorically exempt from CICRA. Planning Commission action is final unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within ten coming days. Project Planner, Mister Steven Rose, Senior Planner.
Thank you, good evening, Chair Jing and members of the Planning Commission. As just wonderfully articulated, our first item is for thirteen ninety-four Monroe Avenue. So this particular project site, it's a zone R one nine, it's in our Santa Moss area neighborhood plan area, and it's one of the larger lots in that area, it's a thirty-two thousand square foot lot. The applicant is proposing a new four thousand four hundred and sixty-seven square foot, single-story, single-family residence. And review of this project is subject to the city site and is subject to the Santa Moss area neighborhood plan, which provides both development standards as well as design guidelines. In consideration of the plan, the single-story, single-family residence incorporates traditional design elements and colors that may be found incompatible and in scale with other homes in the area. And with that, and in conclusion, staff is recommending the planning commission adopt a, adopt a resolution approving the applicant's request. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen, do we have a SARC report?
SARC had no substantive comments, as I recall.
Thank you.
I agree, no.
Thank you, do we have any questions for staff? Okay, I have one. The ADU size is twelve hundred and twenty-nine square feet, I believe. So that's, is that bigger than the guidelines from the city, although it's twelve hundred.
Yeah, I do believe that the maximum is twelve hundred. I will say that the ADU is not subject to this particular project review. And we'll do the plan check for that separately as part of the ministerial building permit.
Okay, so that'll be addressed.
Correct.
So this is just for the house.
Just for the house.
Okay, thank you. And the driveway, there's a comment about that being not permeable, is that correct? It looked like it was permeable pavers, but I probably misunderstood it.
I believe there were, sorry. I, I believe there's a variety of, like, as I understand it, the, the way to get to the property is a very complicated set of easements and a number of different property owners have interests or ownership of parts of it. So it is complicated, as I recall. Stephen, please correct me if I'm wrong about that.
Well, in terms of whether or not it's paved or not, I do believe it does have a it's not just asphalt, I think it was some type of stamped paper pattern. Whether or not it's perviable or not, I'd have to refer to the plans here momentarily. But yes, in terms of access, it's, it is a landlocked parcel, it's does take access over to a property, so if you give me a moment here, I can give you a little bit more of a detail on the the pavement detail, if we're curious on that.
It's quite, quite a large area, so if it was, I guess we prefer, for it to be permeable rather than just solid concrete or asphalt.
Yeah, so the project plan, so this is sheet, it's forty-three in the packet, I believe, than the PDF. It indicates hardscape pavers being used as the primary pavement pattern. I believe that does provide for some infiltration as designed. But broadly speaking, the city has stormwater infiltration requirements, WC three requirements, which this product is reviewed by to ensure that you, if you, in your exceedance of certain amount of maximum pervious area, you do need to have stormwater infiltration, other types of techniques in, in play. This project was reviewed by our Public Works Department, found to be under that threshold as it's currently established.
Okay, thank you. If there's no questions, I'll open it up to the public hearing. And if, I believe the applicant is online, if applicant would like to present and say a few words.
Yes, so I have Doug Rice, is that the applicant? I'm gonna have David speak first.
Hi, David, can you, can you hear us?
Can you hear me? Hello, good evening, can you guys hear me?
Hi, David, if you're talking, we can't hear you.
I'm trying, can you guys hear me? Oh. Sorry.
Are we sure that the AV here is working?
So, no, we can't.
Can you guys hear me?
Perhaps we should try Mister Kim.
Because you see the, the outline around David's box there indicates that they were talking a minute ago, but I'm just wondering if our volume is down or something.
I'm trying to increase it. Okay.
Hi, this is the applicant, can you hear me?
Sounds like it.
Hello.
Probably aren't.
Hello.
How about Hong T Kim?
Yes, hi, can you hear us? Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello.
Yes, we can hear David on our end, I don't know why you're not able to hear him. But I just want to say thank you so much for listening to our application.
So, thank you for confirming that, we're gonna go ahead and reboot our speaker system. So we don't get so much back.
If you could just bear with us.
Can you guys hear me?
I can hear you, David.
Hi. Yeah, I don't know why.
We can hear you here, yeah, he's coming through. Thank you for bearing with us. Oh, I'm lost.
David, you can go ahead now.
Okay, hi, yes, this is David Giannelli, I'm the architect for the application. I just want to mention that the driveway, the circle part of it has to withstand the load of the fire truck. So if we can find pavers that are permeable and can withstand the structural load, we'll definitely have them permeable. Otherwise, the additional track that leads toward the ADU, that definitely would be with permeable papers. In the past, I found that it's difficult to find permeable material that will withstand the load of a fire truck engine, but other than that entry points, circle the rest, we will want to make it as permeable as possible.
Okay, thank you for, for that clarification, appreciate it. Any questions for the applicant in the commission? I think we're good, unless you would like to say anything else, I'll close the public hearing. Ah, okay.
Have somebody by the name of Doug Rice that has his hand raised.
Please, Doug, if you can hear us. You're on.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Hi, Doug, yes.
Good evening, my name is Doug Rice and we are the owners of the parcel adjacent to the proposal. Our question is, we were unaware that new home construction could be done in the city of Campbell with above-ground utilities. This poses an issue in that they will be unsightly going across our, the edge of our backyard, the power lines appear to go within a couple of feet of the corner of our property. And in addition, we are getting ready to submit plans. And this will impact our planting plan in that we won't be able to put a tree in the location as it will potentially interfere with the above-ground utilities to this home. So we're a little bit concerned and we would ask for clarification as to whether above-ground utilities to a new home is an acceptable standard within the city of Campbell. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just broadly comment, the city of Campbell used to have broader, more expansive undergrounding requirements. Most of those have been rescinded, and at this point in time, this particular property is allowed to have overhead service maintained on the property.
Do we know if there's been a conversation between Mister Rice and the applicant on the positioning of utilities and his concern around the tree?
Not to my knowledge, this is the first it's been raised to the, to our applicant.
Can I ask, just for context, what was the reasoning behind backing off on the undergrounding requirements?
Utility undergrounding is a very complicated engineering exercise typically with costs being the primary driving factor. The city had historically had required all brand-new, single-family homes underground, but it's typically found to be a hardship. So the city at one point in time had established a waiver process by which I believe an inordinate number of homes were qualifying for the waiver process to such an extent that the city then started to prioritize certain streets on, like, say, industry, so say if you're on Hamilton or Bascom, that those projects would need to be undergrounded, but streets, local streets, those streets which are interior, not as visible, would not need to be required to underground. And this project has a local street, as so defined by our street guide, and wouldn't be required to be underground as a result.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Okay, thank you. Doug, if you can hear me, have you spoken to the applicant about your concern?
We have not, we, we only found out about this when we got the card last week, and it took six days for the card to get to us. So we have not spoken to the applicant about this and looking at their plans online on, I think it was Friday, was the first opportunity we had to even find out what was going on as far as their development plans. We have no objection to the rest of the development, the only concern we have are these utility lines. And they will have to cross another property or part of another property to get to this property as well. So we've been in discussions, pardon me, with PGME off and on, as to whether off and on as to whether we can have access to that power pole for our temporary power during our construction. And that has been a question. And PG&E is unable to determine whether that could be permanent or even if they have easements to that pole. So I would suggest strongly that a review with the utility companies would be in order to determine the issue here.
Um, could I ask the applicant, would you be open for a discussion with Mr. Rice about the location?
Hi, this is Hong T Kim. I'm absolutely available to discuss with Mr. Vice on this matter.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Yes, I also would like to mention that we didn't add any overhead utilities. The only one electrical which is overhead is existing. So that's what's shown on the plans. We did not add any new overhead utilities.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. Question regarding how are you crossing Smith Creek? Can you explain the bridge that you're using to cross that Smith Creek into the property, please? This is for the applicant.
Sorry, what is the question about the bridge?
Uh, the question was about how you are crossing Smith Creek. Um, you know, I see the plans where you use the word culvert and you know, you show how you, you show it, but you know, it, there's not, not much detail.
Yeah, we've been asked by the fire department to make the culvert little bridge um, to be able to withstand the load of a fire engine. So we have to design the bridge to be widened by about a foot or so and structurally reinforced. The current utilities that are running underneath the bridge will stay there. Uh, we've been in an extensive review with the Santa Clara Water Valley and they are checking every utility basically, and we're making sure we're keeping them where they are under the bridge. So there is a structural engineer designing that. Um, that's really what's been making this project more complicated, also because the bridge goes through several properties and easements, and there is extensive review of that right now.
Right, and also, you know, as it crosses Santa Clara Valley Water District, Smith Creek, wanna make sure that we don't encroach onto the carrying capacity of the creek, you know, we don't reduce that in any way.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
If there's no further questions, I'll close the public hearing and turn to the commission. Commissioner Zissa.
So, I was uh, I attended the SARC on this, so I got a chance to review it earlier. Um, and, and I had no uh, real issues, I had a couple of questions about, about things, but you know, it's a single story home, I, 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 I found the home designed to be attractive and fits in. Uh, yeah, you, you, it's, it's setback, at least from Monroe, such that you actually can't really see much from that side. Uh, it's hard to see the adjacent properties in terms of what they're experiencing, but all the setbacks are, are good and and there's now, I don't know if it's Mr. Rice's property or, or what, but there's another large property uh, on the north side that it's already existing, that's quite, quite a large home as well. So it's, it's in as far as not being the only large house nearby. So I, I was good with the design, the ADU looks nice, assuming it's gonna be within uh, you know, what's acceptable and so I, 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 I found the, the, the design to be fine and, and, and would approve it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I think the design is great and it's a large home on a very large lot that meets all of the requirements of the city.
Thank you. Commissioner Craig.
Yeah, I certainly agree. I, I think the design's fine. I, I like that they're protecting the oak trees. Um, you know, my, my experience on the planning commission in terms of the overhead utilities is that we all want underground. I mean, it looks better for everybody, and I think even the owners do, and but the practicality of the issue is is a whole nother, another deal. I remember there was a big deal about underground, undergrounding the utilities ten, twenty, thirty years ago. In real life, it hasn't turned out, and, and in fact, I, I'm trying to remember about a time when we actually did require an underground utility when, when it was infeasible and we just approved it. So I understand the concern, but I know it's a practicality issue and a tough one. Also, this is the first time I ever heard of that creek, by the way, so that was a new creek that I, I heard about, but uh, yeah, I think the project is fine. I think, you know, a big lot, it's kind of too bad that, you know, it's not one of these SV nine type of things, but I know there was problems with the excess and there were some practical concerns there too, so it just didn't, didn't work out there. So turns out a large lot and a design and then meeting all our requirements easily, I think is a fine project.
Thank you. Commissioner Kim, Kim call.
Uh, I also think it's, it's actually great design. They are lucky to have such a nice, large lot that they can you know, spread out and, you know, they are, I'm in an enviable position with this project.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Um, I concur that it, that is a truly tremendously large lot. The, there's nothing wrong with the house, it looks very reasonable, and I'm glad they're adding an ADU because that's truly a tremendous amount of space. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, and I just echo my fellow commissioners' comments, I think it's great, great, nice contemporary design. Um, so I'm for it, I'd encourage Mr. Rice and the applicant to have a constructive uh, conversation around trying to find an amicable sighting for the, the poles or the utilities. Um, so do I hear a proposal for?
Sure, I'll, I'll just move approval at the planning commission, City Campbell approve a site and architectural review permit to allow construction of an approximately four thousand four hundred and sixty seven square foot, single story single family residence on property located at thirteen ninety four Monroe Avenue. Project file number PLN twenty twenty one dash eighty four.
Thank you.
All second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sizer? Aye, Commissioner Ostrowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Gray?
Aye.
Commissioner Kamkar?
Aye.
Vice Chair Bookbinder?
Aye.
Chair Ching?
Aye. So that is carried unanimously and is final unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within ten calendar days. So thank you and good luck with your new home.
Thank you so much, everyone.
So moving on to the second item, which is new business. That is election of the twenty twenty three Chair and Vice Chair. Do we have any, anybody proposing a new Chair and Vice Chair here?
You know, Commissioner Ching, if I, if I, if I could do this, you know, I think that first I want to say, what a great job you did. I mean, we had some really tough meetings. And you've really got a knack for this thing, you really shepherded us through there, always cordial and keeping the thing moving and keeping us on point, so we were really fortunate to have you as our, as our chairman this past year. And but we do know that we have a really a great vice chairman and I would like to nominate Adam Bookbinder, our Vice Chairman, to be Chairman of the, of the Planning Commission for next year. And also, if I could, at the same time, I don't know if we do this in one, in one motion, but I would nominate our, our next in line, Alan Sizer to be Vice Chairman of the Planning Commission next year as well, so. And I know that they're up to the task.
Thank you, Commissioner Craig, and for, for the kind words, he's working with a great commission and learning from example from previous chairs. So thank you for that and uh, do we have a second for those two nominations?
I second that nomination.
Thank you, Commissioner Kamkar, and shall we take a vote on it for the first position of Commissioner Bookbinder for Chair?
Um, all in favor for Commissioner Bookbinder as Chair?
Aye.
Aye.
And as Vice Chair, Commissioners Zissa?
All in favor for Commissioner Sizer as Vice Chair?
Aye.
Okay, so congratulations.
Thank you. I'll, I'll hope to run these meetings as efficiently and smoothly as you've done.
No, it's gotta go up from here. This is.
I get it. I, I also want to echo Commissioner Gray about Commissioner Ching's chairmanship. He's done a great job. I, I got a chance to meet his wife at, at the dinner, his lovely wife, and I said to him, I said to her that, you know, your husband is, is like a very diplomatic excellent chairman, and she looked at me and she said, he's really diplomatic?
You're talking about my husband?
I said, so I don't know what that's about, but, but good job.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, we can, it's reported, small, sorry to interrupt. I don't, I can't remember the name of the position, so there's one more position, and this would be the second position of SARC. And so if there's, again, I'm still new here, I, I think it usually rotates to, to newer commissioners, if my understanding is correct. Uh, but anyways, if, if there's someone willing to step into that second SARC Chair, that would be the next.
Yeah, if, if Commissioners Carcroft is, is interested, I would, I would recommend him.
Thank you.
Yes, I would, I would be interested if I have the support.
That sounds good. Don't know whether we need a vote on that, but I think we're all in approval. For that, so for the SARC, it would be Commissioner, well, Commissioner Vice, Vice Chair Zissa and Commissioner Kamkar. Thank you. And we have.
And I think Commissioner Ching, that Commissioner Bookbinder has to do the rest of the meeting. He has to gavel us out now.
Wait, does this happen automatically? I actually don't remember, it was a year ago. Does this happen immediately?
Actually. It does now.
Either way, it's fine.
I'm sorry, point of order, um, did you, did we need to go through the planning commission dates for next year or?
Yeah, th- this is mostly administrative, we usually don't give it to you, but we gave you the, we gave you the dates for next year. For some chance, a bunch of commissioners look at those dates and say we have an immediate conflict, let us know, but it's more of an acknowledgement that that's next year's schedule.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's much appreciated. At this point, do we have a report from Community Development Director?
Uh, nothing additional, last meeting of the year. By extension of the council, the city clerk is not here, and I think you're all invited, if you want to come next week. We do have two new incoming council members and one council member that was reelected. Um, so one week from tonight in these chambers, I think there's a send off for the mayor who's termed out and Councilmember Gibbons who's termed out, and then the two new council members and Councilmember Bybee who's coming back, so just wanted to, I think you might have already got those invitations, but passing that along. Other than that, happy holidays, nothing additional for me, thanks.
Okay, and I think the next thing we have on our docket is a report from the Residential Standards Committee, which I don't think we have anything from, and sorry, it's reloading. Um, I believe there is a report from any subcommittee reports, which I don't believe we have. That said, there we go, I will then adjourn us to our.
Oh, you missed one item.
Oh.
Presentation by the incoming Chair of the two thousand twenty two Chair Plaque to the outgoing Chair Ching.
Oh, gosh. Oh, I, I am so sorry, I, oh, wow. Ah, here, man.
Dereliction of duty.
Oof, that's a devastating insult. Okay, ah, so. There you go.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
Take a quick picture of you, that's all right.
All right, thank you.
All right. Just to check, I don't get to take this home with me, right? Okay. With that said, let me just pull up the schedule. Alright, so we will be adjourning to the next meeting of January tenth, twenty twenty three.